Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. School Committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, under legislation enacted in July of two thousand and twenty-two. The statute, chapter one oh seven of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two, extends quorum reductions for remote meetings. All votes while remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded by LCTV and aired live on their YouTube channel. We will begin tonight with correspondence.
Okay, the following correspondence will be recorded. An email from Megan Henshin dated January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four regarding class sizes in elementary schools and the homework guiding principles. An email from Ms. Summer Williams dated February second, two thousand and twenty-four regarding the elementary music position reduction in FY twenty-five budget. An email for Mary and Dennis O dated February sixth, two thousand and twenty-four regarding the elementary music position reduction in the FY twenty-five budget. An email from Suzanne Shuqiu dated February sixth, two thousand and twenty-four regarding the elementary music position reduction in the FY twenty-five budget. An email from Mr. Michael Nucci dated February second, two thousand and twenty-four regarding the Long Meadow Public Schools music program. An email from Ms. Lindsay McKee dated February seventh, two thousand and twenty-four regarding anticipated class sizes at the elementary level in FY twenty-five. And an email from Ms. Claire Collins dated February eighth, two thousand and twenty-four regarding anticipating class sizes at the elementary level in FY twenty-five.
Thank you. We'll move on to a purple minutes. We have a recommended motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the February sixth, two thousand and twenty-four school committee meeting as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Adam. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a vote. Mary?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Adam?
Yeah.
Zach?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I still don't see Julie correct. So, and yes for me. I get everyone? All right, we are going to head forward into visitor comments. We have lots of visitors today, so we will do this one of two ways. Same kind of typical rules as in a regular in-person meeting apply. If you have something that you'd like to say, raise your hand. You can either like literally raise your hand or you can use the raise hand function. Either one will work nicely and we'll give everybody a couple of minutes to speak. We'll try to keep comments to around three minutes or so. Please remember to identify yourself, particularly if the name on the screen might not match who you are. So, go ahead and we'll see our first hands if anybody would like to comment. I see Jen DePande, so we'll open the floor for you.
Hi, my name is Jen DePande. I am a fifth grade teacher at Wolf Swamp. One of the emails that was sent earlier was from our building, so I was hoping to be able to read that tonight. I apologize, my, there we go, my computer's moving a little slowly. Dear Long Meadow School Committee, we're writing to express our deep concerns regarding the proposed class size in third grade at Wolf Swamp Road for the two thousand and twenty-five school year, as well as proposed budget cuts to the Title One Student Support Specialist position. The proposed budget for next year shows Wolf Swamp having only three sections at third grade. We respectfully request that this be changed to four sections. Not feel that the needs of the students are being adequately met with three sections. This group has a relatively large class size of sixty-seven students, and there are a significant number of students with academic, behavioral, and social emotional needs. Approximately forty-two percent of the students receive Tier Two or Tier Three academic support. Additionally, at least a quarter of the students receive regular support from our student adjustment counselor and our student support specialist for behavioral or social emotional needs. Since kindergarten, teachers have been advocating for smaller class sizes for this group of students to better meet their needs. As the only Title One Elementary School, the needs of our students would be best met by splitting this class into four sections. This is a matter of equity for these students. Wolf Swamp has an experienced and caring staff who work hard to do our best with every child in every situation. However, given this group of children, giving this group of children a smaller class size would provide them with a more equitable learning environment. According to slide twelve from Dr. O'Shea's two thousand and twenty-five budget presentation, all other grade levels with sixty-seven students or more and one with only sixty-four have been split into four sections. We support the proposal to have four sections of kindergarten and second grade at Wolf Swamp next year. Our third grade students deserve that as well. Inadequate space is another equity issue at Wolf Swamp. Limited spaces to support students as well as a lack of adequate meeting rooms. Additionally, our staff lunchroom is in a storage closet in a hard-to-reach location. We love the town preschool staff and students, but one factor impacting our spacious issues is that the preschool and their support services currently use six rooms in our building. We ask that this space issue be closely examined. Finally, we're very concerned regarding the proposed budget cut of the Title One position of student support specialist at Wolf Swamp Road School. As educators, we are deeply invested in all our students' welfare and educational opportunities, and we believe it is essential to address the potential negative impacts of such a decision on their most vulnerable students. Our student support specialist provides critical support to students daily and also responds to crisis situations that arise. She has developed strong, positive relationships with many students. We understand that the Title One funding is projected to be greatly reduced next year, and we want to voice our strong support for this position. We recognize the challenges of this year's budget constraints, and we appreciate your consideration for our concerns. Respectfully submitted from undersigned Wolf Swamp Road staff.
All right, thank you very much. Be sure to. Jen McInnis?
Hi, good evening, school committee members, Superintendent O'Shea and other members in this room. My name is Jen McInnis, and I am one of the nurses here in the Long Meadow Public Schools. I am here on behalf of the nursing staff to give support in keeping the nursing position that is in jeopardy of being cut through these budget cuts of the fiscal year twenty-five. To begin, I'd like to remind you all of the LPS nursing mission statement. It is, "We strive to support LPS students as they excel in learning, succeed in life, and enrich our community. We do this by providing culturally competent and compassionate nursing care based on principles of evidence-based nursing. The incredible nursing staff in this district are so important to the school community. As nurses, we take on many different roles throughout the school year, from nurse to educator, friend, colleague, and so on. We not only care for your children on a daily basis, anything from a Band-Aid or ice pack to emotional support and listening, but we keep in contact with you, the families. We communicate with parents and families through emails, monthly newsletters, or phone calls. Well, currently, we are nursing staff of seven nurses with a student population of two thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine. Each building has one full-time nurse. The exception to this is the high school, which has the second full-time nurse to provide needed support and to also act as a float nurse in this district when needed. The second nurse for the LHS and district coverage position is beneficial for the following reasons. This is the actual position that they're trying to eliminate. There are nine hundred and thirty-one students plus staff that the nurses are responsible for at LHS alone. Mandated health screenings for the ninth and tenth graders, which is about four hundred and forty students, are completed by both nurses. Sports physicals for fall, winter, and spring are reviewed by both nurses to ensure that students and athletes are cleared to play, and we collaborate with the athletic trainer. And the number of field trips that occur in the high school numbering twenty-two in total to date this fiscal year have had to be approved by the nurses, which involves reviewing anywheres between five to a hundred and fifty student medical records to communicate any medical concerns to the teachers and ensuring students are compliant with doctor orders for any medications needed during the field trips. Sorry. As a district float nurse, there is consistency in care in that the same nurse is being pulled to cover other buildings and the one-to-one student. The float nurse becomes familiar with the different buildings, the nursing tasks, flow the varying nurses' office, nursing policies and procedures, and the students. During the past first hundred days of school this year alone, the float nurse has been pulled to cover other buildings and the one-to-one nurse fifty-four times. This district has a separate one-to-one student nursing position that has gone through five nurses in the past two years. The district float nurse being pulled from the high school has been invaluable in providing coverage for this position and caring for this student, orienting the new nurses, and being a consistent resource nurse for this student and family, knowledgeable of the care that the one-to-one student requires. School nurses are not easy to acquire. This district started the school year with four new nurses and no nurse for our one-to-one student. By eliminating the second high school nurse and district float nursing position, LPS would be losing consistency of having a dedicated nurse available at all times, having tasks in nursing care for students and staff completed in a safely and timely manner at the high school, and safeguards to prevent the risk of burnout amongst the nursing staff. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me and the support of our nursing department here in Long Meadow. We truly care for your children and have their best interests at heart.
Thank you very much. Pamela Kenjemi?
Good evening. My name is Pam Kenjemi. I'm a seventh-grade ELA teacher at Williams Middle School, and I live in East Slough Meadow. I understand that last Tuesday, February sixth, was the official public hearing on the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Had I known about the recommendation to eliminate the librarian media specialist at the middle school level before the meeting last week, I would have been in attendance to address my concerns. It wasn't until I received an email last Wednesday, February seventh, that I was notified of Superintendent O'Shea's recommendation to eliminate the position. Nonetheless, I hope that you will hear my concerns and weigh them in your decision whether or not to approve the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five budget. In an email to colleagues regarding the budget dated January twenty-ninth, Superintendent O'Shea states, "My intention is to communicate our shared vision of providing a continuum of academic, behavioral, and social emotional support to the students of Long Meadow." The recommendation to eliminate the librarian media specialist at the middle school level contradicts this vision. To start, our middle school librarian media specialist, Scott McGinley, services more than six hundred LPS students and supports dozens of teachers. Avoid, and his services at the middle school level directly impact Superintendent O'Shea's shared vision of providing a continuum of support to the students of Long Meadow. As the media specialist, he oversees middle schools' digital media sources and subscriptions. But Scott does more than maintain resources. He is directly involved in lesson planning and teaching at every stage of the research process. Scott assembles resources that provide differentiated entry points for all learners and access to varied materials that promote multiple means of engagement. He teaches lessons on the use of databases, citing sources, paraphrasing, and more. He evaluates students' work and provides one-to-one feedback in conferences with students. From start to finish, he is part of the research process. In grades six through eight, research standards are embedded in the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks at all levels in ELA, social studies, science, and STEAM classes. In two thousand and eighteen, legislation was passed that requires all eighth-grade students to participate in student-led civic action projects. Without a librarian media specialist's work to support our middle school students as they navigate the complicated realms of research, a severe breach in the continuum of academic support for the students of Long Meadow occurs at the middle school level. In his role as librarian, Scott has curated the library collections at both middle schools. You may have heard books referred to as mirrors and windows, especially in conversations about culturally responsive classroom pedagogy and SEL practices. As mirrors, books allow readers to see their own lives reflected on the pages. They support students in feeling seen and affirm that they matter. As windows, they offer a glimpse into the world at large, to see people who are different from them, from different time periods and different cultures. These books build connections and break down prejudices to promote growth and empathy and to become better global citizens and to honor each other's cultures. As adolescents, middle school students seek to better understand themselves and the world around them. The books that Scott has carefully selected in his work as a librarian in the district's two middle schools align with Superintendent O'Shea's shared vision to provide a continuum of social emotional support to the students of Long Meadow. I cannot understand how the recommendation to eliminate the position of library media specialist at the middle school level came about. In fact, I have longed to hear the news that each middle school would eventually be assigned its own librarian and media specialist. The loss of this position directly impacts services to more than six hundred students and support for dozens of teachers. It breaks the vital continuum necessary to realize Superintendent O'Shea's shared vision and the greater community's vision of the graduate. I urge you to give careful consideration to these concerns before finalizing any decisions regarding the budget. I appreciate your time and thank you for giving the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you very much. Scott McGinley?
Hi, everybody. I'm gonna read a letter that I wrote to the school committee and sent earlier today. I've been distressed to learn that the Long Meadow Public Schools administration is proposing to significantly reduce or eliminate the two point five middle school library positions that I have held since two thousand and sixteen. Although I have personal reasons to be concerned about this potential change, I'm alarmed at what it will mean for Glenbrook and Williams to have no professionally licensed, educated, trained, and experienced school library teacher. There are frequent misunderstandings about what the middle school librarian actually does and the many ways that we work behind the scenes to support students and staff. We do not have fixed instructional schedules like elementary librarians who are specials teachers like art, PE, and general music, and who usually provide prep period coverage for classroom teachers. At the middle school level, we co-teach lessons about informational literacy and research skills in conjunction with content area teachers. When I learn that a teacher plans to assign students research assignments, I work with them to develop related standards-based lessons that introduce key concepts and skills and work with students to bring them to proficiency. Additionally, I curate subject-specific mini-collections of informational resources on these subjects with a variety of electronic and print resources that engage students on their different reading levels and in different modalities so that they are accessible to all students. Creating research guides that outline all of these resources takes expertise and intimate knowledge of the library's collections and time which content area teachers simply do not have. I have provided this service to teachers at both middle schools in ELA, social studies, science, music, and world language classrooms, often revising them yearly as new resources become available and older ones become outdated. I step into these classrooms to teach students how to use them in their research. Furthermore, I instruct students in evaluating web sources for credibility, which, in this age of rampant misinformation and artificial intelligence, is vital to their ability to think critically about which information they should trust. I also teach students how to cite their sources using a standard format. Prior to my hiring, LPS had no reliable tool for doing this. It was I who first advocated for the adoption of noodle tools as a means to support this research skill, and the district has now been purchasing and providing the service for all students for many years. No middle school librarian anywhere in a position like mine starts working in new schools and begins teaching on day one. I have built effective relationships that are collaborative with faculty over time, so I know their curricular needs and how they prefer to work. When we plan together and I propose ways to support them and their students, they sometimes ask me if I have the time to teach these lessons and prepare these mini-collections and research guides. I always find the time because I believe one of my jobs is to lighten their loads, which keeps getting heavier every year. I gladly assess students' work cited pages with feedback and conference with students individually who need additional support in this area. I return to classrooms to be another pair of eyes and hands while they work on the skills I've taught them. All I've written so far is just about my instructional role in the classrooms. It is not constant. It ebbs and flows depending on the timing of teachers' units and the school calendar. Sometimes I'm alone in the library on my laptop, and I imagine some teachers, students, and administrators wondering what I'm doing alone in my office at these times. I could be developing research guides or planning lessons I will soon teach or scheduling when I will teach what, at which school, on which day, as I alternate days at these two schools. But that is not all. Another role I fulfill is developing and maintaining the library's collections. Again, this does not just happen overnight. It is constant. Every day, I'm investigating new and engaging books. I'm finally getting around to talking about books for our students to add to the collections. However, when I first stepped foot in these two libraries, I found them sorely lacking in organization and materials appropriate for middle school. Neither had had a professional librarian, but were instead managed by power professionals working as library aides, doing the best that they could. It takes a professional librarian to evaluate library collections and determine how to improve them. One of my first steps in this course correction seven years ago was to reorganize the fiction sections. Each had been organized alphabetically by author from A to Z. I decided to genrefy, as we call it, both sections, which took months of evaluating individual copies and titles, creating new sections among the shelves and call numbers in the catalogs, and relabeling and recoding thousands of books. Why did I do this? Because I knew it would help students access books. Now we have over a dozen different fiction sections at both libraries, from fantasy to mystery to sports fiction and graphic novels. This system helps both dedicated fans of certain genres as well as our reluctant readers find what they are looking for more easily. After this book, circulation numbers skyrocketed. Leaf has generously provided for many of our graphic novels, which are one of the most popular types of books in the libraries. Before this, there were no graphic novels in our libraries. This organizational process is now ongoing, and I hope to continue to make improvements as our sections grow and demand more space and publishing and reading trends change. Another aspect of building an engaging and thriving library collection is to provide diversity of content, format, and reading ability. Previously, our fiction and nonfiction collections did not reflect the diversity of our schools and community. I made it a priority to improve this. I cannot adequately describe how much a diverse and inclusive library collection supports our students' social and emotional needs. You have to see how a student's face lights up when they approach me to check out a book that is about young people that they can relate to, whether the book is about a character who is black, South Asian, East Asian, Latino, LGBTQ, or with a disability of some kind. Similarly, when a student who was struggling with reading came into the library to look for a book for required independent reading, he was able to find a book that excited him from my temporary display of books about ice hockey, many of which were newly acquired. My work is vital to the district goals in the areas of literacy, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and social and emotional learning, and it supports the needs of all students. Simply having diverse books on display helps to create a more welcoming school environment and, at the very least, sends a message to the school communities that everyone is welcome here. These are just some of the ways that having a professional school library teacher benefits the school communities. I want to describe in as much detail what else would be lost with the reduction of these middle school librarian positions, but allow me to list some of them here. Individual attention to students and families needing support with finding books that match their interests, reading levels, and the requirements of reading assignments. Library grant writing, including LEAF grants for the libraries. Expertise on safeguarding students' First Amendment access to information and protecting the privacy of their library records. Access to our suites of free research databases that are provided to Glenbrook and Williams from the Massachusetts Library System, valued at approximately sixty thousand dollars, but cost nothing because they employ a licensed school librarian. Student access to SORA, our ebook and e-audiobook program. Library programming such as March Book Madness and Books Week and support for summer reading. Supervision of fourteen explore blocks across both schools, which will have to be absorbed by other faculty to their detriment. Finally, our administration does not appear to have a plan for maintaining minimal student access to library books and circulation services. That's checking out, checking in, shelving, and maintaining books if there is not a middle school librarian, and no plans for the future development and maintenance of the collections. All things considered, I believe that eliminating or drastically reducing the middle school librarian positions would have many negative impacts on instruction, student literacy and learning, support for faculty, goals in diversity, equity, and inclusion, and social and emotional learning, and student access to a rich collection of books and electronic resources. My colleagues tell me all the time they need to clone me and have two full-time librarians. Halftime is already not enough. Therefore, I request that the school committee votes down any budget that does not preserve the minimal staffing of two point five librarians. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? I'm not seeing any hands raised at the moment. As a reminder, you can raise your literal hand as well as finding the raise hand function. Give me a moment to cycle through our screens here. All right, seeing no additional comment, thank you to the community members who have come out to meetings, who've spoken with us in person, who have emailed us regarding this year's budget. Please know that we read all of your messages and look forward to hearing from you also. And we appreciate all the different.
I'm sorry, before you close it out, I saw a couple of hands waving. I don't know if it was a goodbye or they wanted, or someone wanted to speak.
Good question.
I just wanted to make sure we're not missing someone.
Is there anyone who is waiting to speak that I missed?
Christine King has her hand up.
Oh, thank you. Hold on, I'm not seeing you. Oh, there you are. Okay, yes, Christine King. Go for it, thank you.
I think Pam and Scott, I mean, I'll just have to add that my students ask, "Can I go to the library?" Like almost every day. And if you look at the audience, there are so many middle school teachers here right now that support Scott. I think that's just a clear message from everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that's waiting to speak that I might have missed?
See, Catherine Barsavich, Nicole?
One more on the librarian point as the reality club facilitator at the middle school for students who may be an ally or a part of the LGBTQ community. They gain so much from seeing themselves represented in the books that Scott has brought in, especially in the last handful of years. So, I can't emphasize enough that his reach goes beyond the classroom.
Very much. Anyone else that's waiting to speak? Do any of the other committee members see any other hands that might be missing? All right, thank you again. We really appreciate all the different perspectives and the experience that everyone offers us throughout this process. It continues to be an ongoing process, and we will be continuing the conversation as we move forward in tonight's meeting. So, I encourage folks to stick around for that part of the discussion if they are able to do so. Seeing no other discussion, we're gonna move forward from visitor comments to school committee announcements and recognitions. Any comment, any announcements or recognitions from committee members? All right, seeing none, we will move on to business with guests, which brings us to the center school statement of interest. I'm gonna turn that over to Dr. O'Shea.
All right, thank you. So, the school committee is aware, as we talked about in recent meetings, we have been in the process of preparing a statement of interest to address the need for.
a statement of interest to address the need for, uh, new roof at Center School. Uh, that statement of interest, the MSBA's accelerated repair program, uh, accelerated repair program, uh, just for anyone tuning in or, or new to this discussion, authors, communities, and opportunity to address, uh, targeted building components specifically windows, roofs, and boilers. And so, uh, with the age of the Center School roof, we are now eligible to submit an SOI, uh, to replace that roof. There was a draft of the SOI in your, uh, meeting packet. Um, and it is probably about ninety percent done, but we need some additional time to uh, polish that up and get the very, very specific technical vote language before you. So I could respectfully ask the committee for an opportunity to, um, have a, a very, very brief meeting, um, as early as the end of the week if possible, uh, to consider that Center School roof SOI. Uh, it would be, uh, as I see it, just a single agenda item meeting and we could quickly go through the acquired vote language of the MSBA. Uh, they, they have, the, uh, acquired vote is very lengthy and, and technical. But, uh, we're, uh, we're nearly there. The SOIs are there. They require a lot of work and appreciate the work of, uh, folks in G D W and Tom Mazza for, um, working on that SOI. So we're nearly there and not that we can hit the deadlines. The elect board is, uh, scheduled to consider the SOI at their meeting next, uh, Monday. So if, uh, respectfully ask the committee to, if there's an opportunity for us to do a, a quick Zoom meeting, if we can pull together a quorum at the end of the week.
Alright, thank you. We can be in touch and figure out schedules if we can find a brief window of time to maybe coordinate for us to get together later this week, um, via Zoom, I'm sure would be fine. Um, to review the finalized SOI and approve that submission to MSBA. Any questions or comments related to that process right now? Alright, seeing none, we are moving on to other reports. Um, school committee chair report, just a reminder that, um, March first is the deadline to pull nomination papers for the upcoming June eleventh, um, election. There are open terms, um, available for, um, town moderator, select board, school committee, planning board, and housing authority. So anyone who has any interest, um, in moving forward with, um, nomination papers and diving into, um, this aspect of community service, those nomination papers are due no later than March fifth. Um, nothing else from me? Anything from you superintendent?
No report this evening.
Thank you. Student representative, Andrew. Sorry, you heard. There you are.
Yeah. Uh, hello, everybody. Um, hope everybody had a good snow day. Um, so the seniors will hold, uh, three performances of High School Musical on March, from March fourteenth through the sixteenth. So make sure to get out there and support the seniors in their class parade. I think it's going to be an awesome show. Um, the boys and girls swim and dive team both had incredible performances at the West Central Championship on Sunday at Springfield College. Um, the boys team finished third and the girls team came first, which is really awesome. So congratulations to those guys. Um, the OHS music department is currently offering singing Valentines. Um, students are able to buy these for their friends. Uh, and tomorrow, students will sing a song to the, music students will sing a song to the recipients, um, of the Valentines. So if you're, I guess you're pretty lucky if you get to receive that singing Valentine tomorrow. Um, and then the L T S Key Club will hold their board member elections on Tuesday, February twenty-sixth. Uh, this is a great opportunity for students to become more involved in both their school and their communities because they have a variety of different positions open within the, um, club board. So students can either like work, um, or planning events within the school, outside the school. I believe the president position, uh, the co-president position is also open. So there's plenty of opportunities for, uh, students to get more involved. So thank you.
Alright, thank you, Andrew. Moving forward to other reports, L P V C, Mary.
Uh, we have a meeting tomorrow.
Alright, we'll hear next time then. Energy and Sustainability, Adam.
Uh, no report.
Thank you. And SEAL, Michaela.
Um, the next presentation is on February twenty-eighth and it's about, um, five oh fours presented by the Federation of Children with Special Needs, and you can register on the SEAL website.
Alright, great. And then quick update on Middle School Building Committee. Um, the town manager and Dr. O'Shea and myself met this morning with the MSBA for our design under selection interviews. Um, we were very pleased with the proposals that we saw and we want to thank all three of the firms for the words of the presentations they gave today. Um, ultimately, the highest ranking during voting went to, um, Jones Witset Architects. And pending successful negotiations and board approval, we look forward to working with them throughout the design process. Alright, we are headed into ongoing business. Oh, no, I'm sorry, subcommittee reports, but we don't have any subcommittee reports. Correct? Yes, subcommittee report according to our agenda. Okay. I know we have a few subcommittee meetings on their way up in the next few weeks. We're headed into ongoing business and the fiscal year twenty-five school budget. I just want to open by saying that this is a budget that still has a lot of moving parts. Um, there are things still in play when it comes to our, um, budget and the funding expectations. Um, so it is my recommendation and the, um, administrative team and the town manager's recommendation that we hold off on voting on our budget until February twenty-seventh. Um, and we will plan to meet with the select board on March fourth instead of next week to give a little bit more time for some of these moving pieces to settle in and give us a clearer picture of what we can expect from the budget. Um, but I'll turn it over to Dr. O'Shea for an update on where we are at this point.
Alright, uh, thanks so much. I'll do a, um, I just have a, just a very, very small number of slides to share with you to, um, give you some additional background and information in relation to the FY twenty-five budget. So I would, um, begin by saying I share, uh, the concerns of many of our, um, speakers, uh, during the public speak portion of our meeting. I think this is, um, the most challenging budget that certainly I've experienced during my time here in Long Meadow and it's, um, uh, sort of flat revenue projections, uh, matched with rising costs. And, uh, it's creating the challenges that, you know, will result in a budget that, um, you know, to quote Scott McGinley, it would have many negative impacts. Um, this is, this is not a budget that, um, you know, I can proudly say makes the critical investments that we need to make to provide that continuum of services. Uh, but it is a budget that, you know, mirrors the, or responds to some significant fiscal realities that are, are before us. So, um, this is, uh, the next steps in our, our budget. I highlighted, uh, what, um, the chair mentioned a short time ago. And that is that, uh, we have some additional wiggle room with the, uh, with the calendar, with the budget calendar and the weeks ahead. This is a, I think, a good thing that we have some additional time to uh, gather feedback, uh, to make sure that the committee has all the information it needs to make an informed decision and, uh, even give us some additional time to understand what the, uh, cost and revenue projections look like. So as mentioned earlier, uh, right now, we would project the school committee voting on the FY twenty-five budget on February twenty-seventh and then, uh, presenting that budget to the select board on March fourth. As I've said, um, many, many times, you know, there are, uh, long after the vote is, the budget is voted by the school committee, there, um, you know, we, we gain greater insights and understandings of projected costs. And, uh, also we have a better understanding what state aid levels might look like or grant, uh, receipts might look like. And so there are certainly decisions that are made long after, uh, the size of the budget is voted by the committee on February twenty-seventh. Some, some good news, uh, reflected in the first set of bullets on the slide deck. Um, some modest good news, uh, in the slide deck before you. January thirtieth, we had presented a budget to the school committee that reflected a three point four percent increase from the general fund. And it was, that was on a Tuesday. It was on a Friday, just a few days after that, that, uh, we received notice that, in fact, that three point four percent increase would challenge the town's ability to develop a balanced budget, which it is required to do. And so we quickly had to, uh, develop a, uh, proposal for the school committee that reflected a three, three percent increase, uh, from the general fund. And that, that resulted in some of the, what we call the, the tier-two reductions, proposed reductions that were, um, presented at your meeting on February sixth. And again, uh, none of these, um, none of these proposals are proposals that, um, we believe advances our mission. These are, these are things that will in fact have negative, uh, impacts. And, um, you know, I think any superintendent wants to stand before, uh, the staff and the community and then the school committee and say that we're, we're making critical investments and that we're, uh, able to, um, provide additional experiences and supports for students. Uh, this budget does not do that. Um, it, it challenges our ability to provide, uh, it will, uh, in fact, challenge our ability to provide the level of service that we at least want to provide uh, in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So the, the modest good news that we received is that, um, the town had informed us just yesterday that, based on their, uh, recent, um, projections that we could account for, we could plan for a three point one percent increase from the general fund. So this would increase, uh, support from the general fund to the LPS budget by an amount of, uh, just under thirty-nine thousand dollars. So that's some additional wiggle room and, and as a team and based on all the feedback that we've received uh, tonight and through, uh, emails to the committee and to the administrative team, we'll need some time to sort of figure out, um, how we would want to recommend, um, a, a budget that would reflect that thirty-nine thousand dollars. So that's, that's modest good news. Every little bit helps. And, um, if it can offset the, the impacts that we're projecting, then that's, that's a good thing. Um, the other thing I'd mention, um, and I hope everyone on this call, it, you know, takes me up on my encouragement to contact, uh, your legislatures to talk about the chapter seventy uh, challenge that we're facing. We are looking at a minimum increase in chapter seventy-eight of, of just thirty dollars per student. Um, that amounts to eighty-something thousand dollars. Um, it hardly matches the, the increases that we need to account for in the FY twenty-five budget. So, um, I'm, I, I am, I don't know if I'm, I want to say I'm hopeful, but I, um, I would hope that the legislature would see to it to increase, at the very least, increase the, uh, minimum amount a district could receive on a per pupil basis in chapter seventy, funding that would go a long way to help us alleviate some of the negative impacts that, um, were described during our public speak portion of the meeting tonight. Um, so there are, you'll notice that this slide is called Budget Variables and Uncertainties. And it is, it is normal and natural and expected to have even at this stage, um, a number of budget variables and uncertainties. We are, you know, largely what we're doing is, much of this is based on projections. Uh, and so one of the things that we have to project is the number of kindergarten sections that we would, um, account for in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Right now, we're budgeting for eleven sections. Right now, we have, we have ten. So this budget adds a kindergarten section, uh, based on our best understanding of census data and projected enrollment for the incoming kindergarten class in twenty-four, twenty-five. If, um, and, and if anyone, you know, needs to hold out hope or, or needs to understand some of the uncertainties, if kindergarten enrollment comes in lower than, uh, we're anticipating, that would give us an opportunity to, uh, potentially reallocate with the, with the school committee's, um, consent, the opportunity to reallocate, uh, a kindergarten position. So if, if we're running ten sections next year, the same way we are this year, then that would give us some latitude and some leeway and some wiggle room in the FY twenty-five budget. The other, um, uncertainty at this point, and I think this is, um, even more, uh, variable than, than in a typical year is utilities. And, and certainly Mr. Mazza can, in fact, if I could ask you, Tom, to, to weigh in on this, this bullet here, sort of the, the uncertainty that, um, our utility projections have for us right now as we plan for the coming year. So, um, if I could invite you just to, to hit that point for us, Tom.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the big unknown right now is in regards to the rate we'll be paying for natural gas. Our current contract runs through October of twenty twenty-four. And so we will, we, we've begun the process of looking at pricing and, um, decided that we will wait till the summer to lock in. But, uh, we're anticipating at least right now a potential increase of anywhere from forty-five to sixty percent jump in the current commodity rate that we're, we've been paying for the last three years. Uh, based on where the market has gone and potential rates we could see come this summer. So it's an, it's an unknown. Uh, we made some assumptions as we built the cost associated to for our utilities, specifically natural gas for next year. With, uh, that assumption, we'll be seeing an increase to that rate.
But if we, you know, to put it in, um, you know, terms that, looking ahead, if, if we were to receive some good news in terms of utility rates in the summer of twenty-four, it might put us in a position to restore, uh, some of the positions that we have potentially identified for reduction in the FY twenty-five budget. So, um, that's a, you know, in, in any year, utility costs are unknown and uncertain and are based on informed projections. Uh, but I think this year that is especially true. Uh, the other uncertainty that is before us relates to, um, sun, spring and summer enrollments. And every year we have, um, sections at grade levels that are on our watch list. And I would say at the very top of that watch list right now is the rising third grade at Wolf Swamp Road Elementary School. Um, we have, um, right now over twenty-two students, uh, per section at that grade level. And I share everyone's concern for the size of the section serving that cohort of students. Uh, I would, you know, in, I would, uh, remain hopeful that we could be in a position to add another section. And it might be that if we experience some spring and summertime enrollments, may, we may need to make some even harder choices to add, to make sure that we can add that fourth section at Wolf Swamp Road for the rising third grade. So that certainly is on our watch list. I, I, I would also say, uh, that in cases where we have had in the past class size that is larger than we would favor, we sometimes are in a position to add, uh, an academic tutor to support the students at that grade level. So we'll keep our eyes on that. I know the school committee is very concerned about class size for that cohort of students. And I remain hopeful that we can be in a better position to serve students and support staff at that, at that grade level. Uh, Long Meadow High class signups is an, is another variable that, you know, that could, um, we have slated, uh, one position for elimination at Long Meadow High School based on however the signups break. And so that is a, uh, to be determined variable that, uh, will keep the community and the school committee informed on. Uh, eBay services are a source of revenue. And I would also say that the committee has yet to make decisions on, uh, school choice and Metco, which sometimes have the effect of evening out class size across schools and grades. I think we, we all share a really strong interest and commitment to creating equitable class sizes across grades and schools. So, uh, let me, I'll stop there. Um, if the committee has any questions for us relative to the- any questions for us relative to the bullets that are on this slide. If not, I'll move on.
I'll open up for questions. See, there we go. Let's see everybody a little better.
All right.
I'm not seeing any questions right now, so I think you're good to keep.
All right. So the uh, the committee is well aware of some of the items that are up for consideration in terms of developing a budget that responds to the, the fiscal conditions, the, the revenue projections and the cost projections. Uh, last week we had um robust discussion around uh band instructor position that serves elementary and middle school, largely elementary. Um, we have, at the committee's request, we've put together some information that is in your meeting packet uh that you can take a look at relative to um fifth grade enrollment. And we tried to um understand the um the historical enrollment of students as they move from fifth grade to twelfth grade. So that information is there for you. Uh, we also have at, at the committee's request, you had asked for some information on uh the schedules for our elementary music educators. And so we, we gave you a summary uh to help you um understand that as well. I'd say, you know, it was a uh, a challenging discussion last week, but I, I think one of the things that um, in my reflection that has stood out for me is, is the increased number of signups at fifth grade. And I, I would say that that was really the result of a combined effort of uh K twelve music educators working with administrators and, and communicating clearly to families about the great opportunities that exist for students who sign up for fifth grade bands. So we have hundred four students at fifth grade who um it, it's, it's the highest number of fifth grade band students that we've had in um almost twenty years. And so that's, that's really great to hear. And if we can build that, that base at the fifth grade, it's only going to help us uh in the later grades and um, and I think we're, we remain confident that uh our elementary educators have the expertise, the capacity to, to serve uh those students uh as they have in the past. Uh, elementary class size, again, um, we have our watch list. Um, headlining that watch list is that Wolf Swamp Road Rising Third Grade. And we, we hope we, we can be appropriately responsive to that cohort of students. Uh, library services, I, I concur with um the descriptions, the importance of library services. They uh clearly assist our students with um developing their information literacy skills. Um, they help students discern fact from fiction. They support staff with uh, with research and um, in developing a collection that is reflective of the diversity of our, of our learners in this community. So uh right now we had, uh, we, we do need to do some additional thinking on access. I think we would want to make sure that whatever we have in place uh ensures that students have access to the great collection of books that reside at Glenbrook and uh Williams. And then uh to note that we had uh mentioned last week that we were hoping to offset, excuse me, hoping to offset that uh library uh situation with uh the development of a library aide position to serve uh the vacancy at Glenbrook and Williams. And again, um, we, as we noted earlier, uh, we have some slight additional wiggle room uh that the town has afforded us. And how it's applied to the, the list of bullets on this slide is something that we can continue to work through and talk through. Uh, the floating nurse position uh stationed at Long Meadow High School. Again, you know, we were fortunate to uh add this position uh several years ago. And it has been, it has been valuable in terms of providing the continuity of service that kids need for their overall health and wellness. Um, this is, you know, um, this would be a troubling reduction for me. Um, but the hope is that we could offset it with a health aide to ensure that the remaining nurse at the high school is able to focus more of her attention on the health needs of students uh visiting that office. The special education supervisor position, uh, I would say to the committee and to the community that we are sort of reviewing um this recommendation and, and hoping to develop some options that we can bring forward to you in the days ahead. Um, I think when this uh position was conceived, we were uh, you know, working with a, a, a budget, a challenging budget, but one that has become even more challenging in uh, in recent days. And so we will continue to think that through and think about how we can ensure that we're supporting our special educators and supporting families. Uh, given the, the fiscal challenges that, that we're facing. The Title One reductions and uh again, appreciate the, the comments of the Wolf Swamp staff relative to the importance of the student support centers at both Wolf Swamp and Glenbrook. I think they have been uh very successful in helping us support the social emotional needs of students, their behavioral needs, their mental health needs. Uh, but this reduction is really tied to a uh change in uh the federal census and uh Title One funds are extended to districts that are in schools really that support a high percentage of students coming from families that are identified as low income. And so um, with this being a federal entitlement grant, uh, it becomes challenging to sort of backfill that position with regular budget funds. And if I could again rely on Mr. Maz or Assistant Superintendent to help me uh explain that um, the, the, how that Title One reduction plays out with the budget and what um, sort of backfilling that would mean for the FY twenty five budget. So Tom, can you help me on that one?
Yeah, I mean, federal grants are really designed to provide supplement to local and state funds. If it were determined that um, the committee wanted to provide funding to maintain those staffing levels. If we were to see a rebound in the Title One federal grant, we wouldn't then be allowed to then put out those point five positions back onto the Title One grant. They will be viewed as having been funded by local sources. And it would be viewed as supplanting or transferring um from local sources to federal funds. So it would be problematic. We would have to find a different use for those, that federal Title One fund if we saw a rebound in future years.
Then finally, that uh reduction of a position at Long Meadow High School, it, you know, I know this is one that uh is, is troubling and concerning to Principal Anders. And I share his, his concern about this reduction. Um, we have to go through the signup process to see how that uh will play out. And so there's a, as, as the chair mentioned, to kick off the meeting, there are a number of moving parts. Uh, and I know the committee is eager to get additional information on the items on this slide. And there's, the committee is eager to gather some additional feedback from staff in the community and the administration as well. So um, those are some of the moving parts that we referred to earlier. I, I don't anticipate that the committee needs to take any action tonight. Uh, but if there is any additional information that would be helpful to you, we're certainly prepared to gather that um, or even answer some questions tonight. Just a, a final note on um elementary sections and um just wanted to kind of give a high level summary of where we are relative to the proposed and I, I underscore proposed, this is subject to change based on shifting uh enrollment patterns. Uh, Blueberry Hill is uh going to potentially could go from twenty sections to nineteen. The pluses and minuses are noted on the right. We have a, a rising second grade that the principal had proposed. Uh, go from four sections to three with a, a rising third grade to go from three sections to four. So that is sort of a reallocation at Blueberry. And then the, the, the third bullet, uh, we have a fifth grade quote graduating class being replaced by uh three fifth grade classes, a rising cohort of students at that grade level. So that explains the the overall one section reduction at Blueberry. At kindergarten, we have a rising kindergarten section that uh this budget would propose go from four sections at fourteen, fifteen students to three at nineteen. Again, similar to other items we've talked about um in a, you know, it would be advantageous to keep that at uh three sections for that uh cohort of students heading to first grade. Um, but again, lots of challenges with this FY twenty five budget. Lots of competing needs and interests and uh some, some challenging decisions for all of us. And then finally, uh Wolf Swamp, we are anticipating going from three kindergarten sections to four at Wolf Swamp. Uh, but Wolf Swamp would be down a section uh with four um graduating fifth grade classes replacing, being replaced by three rising fifth grade classes. So it's a it's a wash for uh Wolf Swamp. And not to beat it to death, but definitely keeping our eyes on that third grade section to see if we're um, to watch enrollment and perhaps be in a position to, to add a section in a way that would benefit staff and students uh as was described earlier. So uh, happy to answer any questions the committee might have. Um, and if we can't answer it tonight, we certainly would be prepared to gather information that would be helpful to you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. O'Shea. Um, so knowing that we have a couple of weeks ahead of us still to gather some finalized data related to um budget numbers. Um, I'd like to um ask committee members if they have either um questions related to where we are currently um or thoughts about what information might be helpful to gather or organize in advance of our February twenty seventh meeting. Being weird. Jamie, go for it.
Perfect. Um, thank you, Dr. O'Shea and, and Tom. I think, I, it was fabulous, kind of quick summary. Just a couple of things I want to make sure we hone in on for these kind of longer term budget discussions is um, and I know we spoke about last week, just assistant principles, how all this fits together. I know you're going to come back to us on that, so no need to answer on that. Um, also, um, just because I've been getting a lot of questions, both uh via calls, emails, whatnot, as it relates to athletics and those fee based. Um, next time we, we come at this as well, if we can show and make sure everybody has an understanding of kind of what we're talking about, being in the nitty gritty of it. I kind of know what effect it will have on this budget and it won't be a good one. Um, so you know, even though it might only be twenty five, thirty, fifty grand, obviously, we're dealing in increments here that make us have to make really tough and difficult decisions. So can we just put a number around if those fees weren't changed from, you know, last year to this year and made any adjustments, what negative or positive effect it would have on our overall uh budget numbers? Just so families understand why we go up. Um, I'm, I'm in the midst of it, so I'm paying these fees that I'm, you know, proposing to go up on. So families know why we have to do that and what effect it has on other budgets. You know, you can tie it to librarian, music, whatever it may be. But if we don't make those adjustments, obviously, it's going to have a negative effect. So I want to make sure everybody understands that. Uh, being deep in it, I, I get what it could or could not do. But I think uh many people aren't as close to it. Um, and they just see fees going up and they think it's kind of a um, an easy way for us to increase money, but it, it definitely has a major budget impact to our overall uh budgets. Um, you know, athletic fees have an effect on elementary schools. They have an effect on librarians. They have an effect on a lot of different things that I really want to make sure people actually understand uh kind of what's going on there. Um, because I, yeah, I think it feels very um loose to most people who aren't in uh the high school program yet and don't quite understand how it actually works. Um, so if we could kind of nail that down too, just so people truly have an understanding, because a lot of people ask me questions and um, they, they really don't have a firm understanding of how, how this truly works and what we're actually referring to there. Okay?
To Jamie. Julie?
Um, yeah, sorry. I, I'm sorry I was late and my flight was delayed today. Um, but I just wanted to add to that request, Marty. If, um, I think you mentioned last time talking about kind of like the overall budget for athletics. So um, if we're gonna um discuss the fees, I think it'd be great if you could put it in the context of like what we spent, a little bit of a deeper dive on what we spend on athletics and the primary drivers of the cost, so that we're not talking about the fee piece like in isolation.
Absolutely. Makes sense.
Thank you, Julie. Um, Tom, I know we briefly addressed this last week. Um, that with the Title One reduction, we're seeing that based on census numbers, but that we are not seeing those census numbers in our own data. What can we be doing as a community? Is there anything we can be doing um to rectify the allocation of those funds? Because I know it's complicated for us to work that into our own budget and potentially lose access to those Title One funds down the line. Um, but that is a concerning reduction, I know, as well.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've already reached out to our partners at DSE. We most certainly can take another um, another stat at reaching out again, trying to plead our case for you know, the impact. I would say, looking at the information they provided us, Long Meadow doesn't seem to be the only community that seems to be faced with this funding drop next year. But, you know, based on it being a federal program, maybe reaching out to our federal representatives also to see if there's any thing they can do in regards to uh the situation.
Okay, that was my next question. Are, are we one of the, are there other communities in our region that are also affected by this? Okay, thank you. Other folks, Mary?
Uh, just a couple of questions. Um, in the last slide that you shared, Marty, um, you talked a little bit about how the library position and the nursing position might alternatively be staffed by aides. And I think it would be helpful to know what the difference in service will be if we don't have um, you know, full time uh nurse, a full time nurse and a full time librarian in those positions.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing I was going to ask, um, I mean, if we were to need another section um in third grade at Wolf Swamp, it's already, you know, pushing the limit here. Um, we've had a lot of commentary about that and received a lot of feedback from community members and educators. Um, and we suddenly have an increase in role, in enrollment in the summertime. How do we suddenly fund an additional section? Where does that money come from?
Yeah, I think that, and, and so that I'd start by saying um that wouldn't be unusual as, as, as you know, uh, that there are times when we see a increase in enrollment that causes us to have to add a position in the summertime. Um, sometimes early summer, sometimes late into the summer. Uh, it would, that's when we would turn to Mr. Mazat to see if he could identify uh other savings in the budget, you know, how we would offset that uh to put us in a position to add a section uh long after the budget is voted. And so uh, it really depends on, you know, as the, as the budget evolves, uh where Tom could uh access some offsets to cover the costs of an additional section if it were added later on in the budget. And Tom, feel free to jump in if there's a better way to answer that.
I think he, he described it well. I mean, in future, previous years, we've been fortunate to have either additional attrition that we've experienced once the budget has been passed that we were able to use to help fund. And we needed to add sections. I think there was one year we also uh relied on school choice funds in order to add a section uh that was uh needed but were not, not included in the budget that was originally moved by school committee.
Any thoughts or questions? Jamie?
Um, no, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, um, just uh Yep, um, just uh quick. Um, so just to be clear for what we're asking everybody in the public to do whenever, to reach out as it relates to Chapter Seventy and obviously our, our local representatives. What do we, what do we actually, what are we asking them to do aside from, from, from reach out? Are we asking them specific uh things to ask about? Um, obviously, it's, it's negatively affecting our budget, but what, what are we asking them? Just so everybody's pretty clear about that.
Great question. I'd start by saying Rep. Ash and Senator Olivera and Senator Lester before him have always been great friends of education and supporters of Long Meadow Public Schools. And so I think that the specific ask is to um increase the minimum amount that districts can receive uh for Chapter Seventy. And so we received, along with two hundred and twelve other districts, we received a minimum increase of thirty dollars per student. In past years, the legislature has chosen to uh double that minimum increase or in some cases bump it up to, say, a flat amount of a hundred dollars per student minimum increase. And so that would go a long way for us if, if they were to double that from thirty to sixty dollars. It would mean an additional eighty-something thousand dollars to us. Um, and that would cover um some of the reductions that we've identified here tonight.
Great question. Thank you, Jamie. Julie?
Yeah, um, Marty, I was just hoping, I know we talked about this last week, but I want to make sure I just have it crystallized. What is the role that the assistant principals are playing now in the elementary schools? Because I know we talked about how it had changed and I think we talked a lot about what the role of the special ed supervisor would be, but what, what's the, what are the duties of the assistant principals now?
Yeah, that, that was uh one of the bullets on the slide was that um, as we talk about that special ed supervisor position, that we, we want to sort of develop some options for you. Um, and to
Oh, okay.
Really carefully, yeah, sort of, so I'd say if you can give us some additional time to think that through with the admin team to think about if that's a if that's special education supervisor position, if we can rethink it or reframe it in, in, in a way that accounts for the question that you're asking, which is the responsibilities of the special education supervisors relative to the assistant principals.
Okay, that would be great. Thanks.
Thanks, Julie. Mary?
Um, just going back to um Jamie's question, um, I just wanted to say generally to the community and the educators on the call here. Um, it's really compelling to read your emails and to hear you voice your concerns about the budget. Um, it puts us in a position where, you know, I, I mean, at least I'm speaking personally, you know, to fund all of these things is important. We have all of these competing interests. So if you, if you do take the time to write to um, you could literally send the same emails that you're sending us. They're very good emails. But if you're sending to say, please increase Chapter Seventy funding, I think the stories that we're hearing about why this is so important and the things that they're impacting, they're impacting positions like nursing positions, they're impacting positions like librarians. Um, you know, increased class sizes, um, Title One funding. I mean, that, this is um something that I feel adds a story to why that increase is so important and explains how um constituents genuinely are impacted when we don't receive the funding that we anticipate. So in addition, and this is just a Mary Keen suggestion, but in addition to saying please increase Chapter Seventy funding, I just want to say that in, including your rationale for why and how you and your families and your students are personally affected, um, I think goes a long way as somebody who serves on a committee like this. So thank you for your time and, and coming tonight and for, for writing those emails.
Excellent, Mary. Thank you. Other thoughts or comments? Jamie?
Yeah, one just last question, just uh, uh, what Mary said was fantastic. And the thing I will say to everybody on here, yes, we're dealing with something this year. We'll figure it out. There's going to be tough decisions. Nobody wants to make them. But don't think of this just as this year. Think about it as reaching out to your representative, because this is going to be a continuous thing we need to fight for. And thirty dollars per pupil is, it's, it's ridiculous, right? You know, we're all dealing with increased costs across, across the board. So thirty dollars across all of our student bases, it's, it's, it's almost laughable. It's not even, it's not covering very much within our budget. So don't think of it as like, oh, you know, we're not going to get through it this year because government is slow, inefficient and very unreceptive at times. Think about this as a long-term view. Because the next one, two, three years, if we can get those increases, it's going to help us uh going forward to kind of, you know, maintain the service, you know, within our community that we currently have. So, you know, don't, you know, we may not be successful this year, but think about it the next few years, anything we can increase, it's going to make this way easier for our community. And that's it.
Thank you, Jamie. True. Um, Julie?
Um, well, I just, I want to echo what Jamie and Mary said a little bit, because I think um number one, it has been hugely helpful and informative to get feedback from the community. Number two, like the, I think that one of the things that some of the feedback makes clear is how much we're still dealing with the out, you know, the effects of the pandemic. And it really does feel like the state funding that we're receiving has kind of left us to deal with a lot of that on our own, which is just really you know, kind of painful for, for the community to have to do that. But I wanted to ask a, a specific question as well, Nicole, if that's okay. Um, I think, Marty, I might have just missed this in, in what you said in response to Mary's question, but on, on what we're losing with the proposal on um library in particular, we did get some really good and specific feedback about what the, the role that the school librarians are serving. And I, I think you, in your slides, you said that we would replace it with a library aide, but is that like a, a person with specific skills related to library services or is it a more general type of job? I mean, what are we missing in skills?
Well, I, 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 yeah, great question. This would be a, it would diminish um our service to kids if we are forced to eliminate that library position. Um, a, a library aide, I'm sure we would find uh someone hardworking and um who could uh handle some of the sort of um more bureaucratic aspects of the job, but we would lose the instructional benefit that a librarian provides. Uh, and you know, that's troubling to say, but um, it would really be, you know, library aide, I'd see it as sort of keeping um keeping the library in order and just doing the sort of more bureaucratic management of the collection. And, you know, so you know, that, that reduction is sort of part of that tier two that we talked about on February sixth. Um, and just by virtue of the fact that we identified it as sort of the, the tier two reduction, I think should signal to everybody that it is especially troubling to, to talk about that as a, as a potential reduction. So and you know, similar, um, I think you'd have a similar situation uh in the health offices. I, I would want to be clear that we would still have a school nurse at each of our six schools, uh, but the uh, the floating position, the sort of second position at the high school uh would become a health aide position that again would um handle some of the, a lot of the paperwork and data processing requirements associated with um the nursing positions. So that would, that would have a, a negative impact as well on, on service to kids and families. And, you know, it troubles me to uh, to talk about that. Um, you know, we, we all got into this job to try and do more and better for kids and to support kids and families. And this is a, it would be a step in the wrong direction for us, but um, it is in the face of some, some real fiscal challenges.
I'm wondering if, um, two things. Um, Tom, I know we briefly touched on this last week or last meeting. Um, but I'm wondering if we can maybe plan on getting a little more clarity surrounding this at our next meeting on the twenty-seventh. Um, one of the things I was wondering is budget-wise, how would we, what would we see as a potential savings? Um, if we were to move from that floating nurse position when it comes to um subs for nurses in buildings and nursing for field trips, because I know that's been something that the current position is able to facilitate. Um, so I'd just like to make sure we're really weighing that cost difference. Um, and then uh just, I don't know, I said similar things last week, um, but that library position is another thing for those of us who are still on this call to really consider adding in, as Mary said, um, to your um letters, to your emails that you send to your representatives. Um, I worry a great deal about the inequities that that would mean students face having librarian positions at the elementary level and at the high school, but not having them available during those critical years at the middle school is, as Dr. O'Shea said, a really troubling um possibility. So that's something that we are all grappling with um for each of these positions. So bring those, bring those personal stories and um experiences to those emails to your representatives for sure. Other comments?
Um, sorry.
Andrew, yep. Sorry, I didn't see your hand there.
No, no biggie. Uh, so something that I just wanted to add on is I'm very concerned about this middle school library position getting cut. So if this, if this position does end up being cut, I think something that we might need to prepare for and add this should be probably a requirement of the curriculum in either social studies or English at the middle schools is making sure that students are educated um with new tools and research and research options to make sure that students are prepared for high school and those research, um, has those research projects get more in-depth and in, important in high school is how are we preparing students um for high school with research? And that's a big part of what worries me with this cutting of the middle school um librarian position is that you're going to see this gap between elementary and high school where students aren't getting that key knowledge um that you'd get out of a librarian to help them um make sure that they're ready for high school, because things become a lot more serious with your research projects and social studies and English um once you get to the high school.
Thank you, Andrew. That's really important student perspective on the importance of this position at the middle school level. Any other thoughts? Julie?
All right, I was, I was just going to say, I thought that Andrew's point is a really good one. And when we were talking about the potential reduction in the librarian position um last week, it was reminding me that you know, we had updated the school handbooks, I think, to include more specific language that would get at the use of artificial intelligence. And we are we are entering a situation where we're holding kids more accountable for understanding the resources and using resources well in their work. Cutting back on the resources that they had to help them learn how to do that um would be a real shame.
Agreed. Thank you, Julie. Any other thoughts? All right. So to everyone who is either watching at home or still um with us here on the call, just please know this is still all very much a work in progress. Um, you have a team of administrators and a committee and town officials um and a um wide collection of local educators um and community members who are all still grappling with this. Um, continue reaching out to us um and know that it is something that we are all continuing to work on. Um, and we will continue this discussion at our February twenty-seventh meeting. Going to move us on to new business. We have a couple of field trip requests, beginning with a um preliminary overnight field trip request. Uh, Mr. Masood, did you want to review that one? Or are we good to move forward to a motion?
I can take it. Um, you have um, I didn't tell you anything else to, to uh overnight field trip request. Um, this is a seeking preliminary approval for uh girls lacrosse trip to Albany, New York under the supervision of Coach Studick. Uh, this would be scheduled to depart on uh April twelfth and to return on the thirteenth. Uh, it's for a game on a Friday afternoon, staying overnight and playing a game on Saturday morning. So that's for preliminary approval and we would bring it back to you for final approval. This would only allow us to begin to make arrangements for that, for that trip.
All right, wonderful. We have a recommended motion related to that trip.
I move that the school committee approve the preliminary request to secure prices and make arrangements for students from the Long Meadow High School girls lacrosse team to travel to Albany, New York on April twelfth, twenty twenty-four to April thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a roll call vote. Julie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Adam? Jamie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Um, the next one is an overnight field trip request. We already approved the preliminary version of this on January thirtieth for the music department to head on a three-stop trip um from February twenty-ninth to March second um to the Rhode Island Convention Center, Foxborough High School and Harvard University. Um, any further insights to share on that or questions related to it? See you again. We have a possible recommended motion.
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee approve the overnight field trip for students from Long Meadow High School to travel to the Rhode Island Convention Center, Foxborough High School and Harvard University on February twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four to March second, twenty twenty-four.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Julie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Wish both of them, both of those trips um an enjoyable journey. Um, we have no executive session, which brings us to our final motion.
I move uh that the school committee adjourn the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four school committee meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Julie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you very much, everyone who came out tonight, and we will see you again on February twenty-seventh. Have a wonderful school vacation week.